You guys ready? Oh. I do not. There it goes. Thank you.
Did you get it?
Nope. Now I did, looks like. Suzie did at least. Join as panelist? Want me to do it again? Sorry, guys. No, she is not. Come on, come on, come on, come on. Sorry. We're gonna go without it here in a minute. I don't, but I... That's why I'll give it one more shot. Okay, we'll call the meeting to order at 6:02. Could we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call when you're ready. Chill, please.
Councilmember Bagby?
Present.
Councilmember Cruz is absent. Councilmember Paula?
Here.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Mayor Lands?
Here.
Conflict of interest declarations? Hearing none. Agenda review. Any changes or deletions?
Mayor, no changes this evening.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to B, public comments. Any person wishing to speak to the City Council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on any item on the council agenda at the time the item comes up for consideration. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Per City Council policy, three minutes are typically allotted to each speaker. If you have anyone in the audience that would like to make a public comment, please come up forward.
Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to take this time to specifically thank Melanie for inviting me to attend the City Council tonight. My name is Makalasi Tawee. People call me Maggie. I live and work in Cloverdale. I'm an undergraduate-
Can you speak up just a little more? Do you mind?
Sorry. My name is Makalasi Tawee. People call me Maggie. I live and work in Cloverdale. I'm an online undergraduate student in Aurora Roberts University. I've been given assigned a project on civic engagement. So my choice was to attend council city meetings. That's the reason why I called Melanie. So my professors asked me to learn the purpose and the vision of the council and also what I learned when I attended the meeting tonight. And thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie. Very nice to meet you. Do we have any other public comment? Seeing none, I don't see any hands with the attendees list at this point. Okay, we'll move forward. Proclamations and presentations. The student liaison report. David, my computer is not working, so is there any way that you could read her report? Or do you... Since she is not here.
Mayor, I did not receive a report from her.
Let me try again. Just give me one second then, because I want to make sure that we represent them correctly. Just in case. Okay, I got Guadalupe Nunez's report right here. It says, "Today is a quick and simple report as it's currently spring break for us. We do, however, have many upcoming events as we prepare to go back in a few days. Sports are keeping busy and have games scheduled for the upcoming week. Additionally, I would like to apologize for the confusion with Mr. Eagle. It will be taking place in April. We also have our spring play coming up, and that concludes my report. So thank you, Guadalupe, and I hope you're having a fun spring break." We're all jealous of you. Okay, moving on to C2, proclamation for Cesar Chavez Day. Is there anyone that would like to read any of these proclamations that you are wanting? Or you want me to go through all of them? Anyone?
I'm happy to read it.
Absolutely. There's three of them, so-
I'll read this first. I'll use paper whenever I possibly can.
So with, with that one, there's also-
Is there anyone here to accept the proclamation for Cesar Chavez Day?
Mayor and members of council, Councilmember Bagby, we have Alma Boeing in the audience this evening, joining us on behalf of Nuestra Comunidad. We've had the opportunity to work with Nuestra Comunidad on some important emergency preparedness work. In addition, an attendee on Zoom is Jade Waymouth. Jade is with La Familia Sana. Tonight, we would like to honor both Jade's work with La Familia Sana as well as Alma Boeing's work with Nuestra Comunidad.
Go ahead and start?
Yes, please.
All right, well, welcome, everyone, here and in the virtual world. This is a City Council proclamation recognizing March 31st as Cesar Chavez Day. Whereas Cesar Chavez Otrada Chavez was born on March 31st, 1927, on a small family ranch near Yuma, Arizona. After serving our nation in World War II, Cesar Chavez returned to farm labor in California and began advocating for farm workers' rights. On April 23rd, 1993, Cesar Chavez passed away, leaving behind an enduring legacy of service and leadership. And whereas Cesar Chavez's influence has made a lasting impact on farm labor issues and inspired millions of Latinos to achieve educational and political successes, and whereas Cesar Chavez's leadership will be remembered for utilizing the principles of nonviolence and service to community, and whereas Cesar Chavez founded the National Farm Workers Association, which ultimately became the United Farm Workers of America, or UFW, AFL-CIO, the first successful farm workers' union in the United States history. Under Cesar Chavez's tireless leadership, the UFW was the first to win collective bargaining rights for farm workers. And whereas the UFW's collective bargaining agreement significantly improved the quality of life for farm workers throughout the United States. And whereas in 1994, Cesar Chavez was posthumously awarded the Presidential Medal of Freedom, the highest civilian honor in the United States. And whereas on Cesar Chavez's birthday, March 31st, individuals- Sorry. It's really moving. Individuals and organizations throughout this nation will celebrate his life and work by participating in community service projects. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Cloverdale do hereby proclaim March 31st, 2022, as Cesar Chavez Day. Now therefore be it further resolved that the 31st day of March shall annually be known as Cesar Chavez Day of Service and Learning in Cloverdale in order to reflect on and honor the life of this distinguished leader, promote the principles of nonviolence and service to community, presented this day, March 23rd, 2022. Do you want to present this to Alma?
I do. Would you as well?
I'll come down too.
Okay. Melanie?
Oh, sorry, one more? One more?
On behalf of Nuestra Comunidad and my whole team, I'd just like to acknowledge that I don't do this work alone. So I am honored to receive this today, but my team is here. So I'd like my team to come up really quickly. Like Cesar Chavez, I believe that a community to move forward, we have to work together. And there's nothing that I do through NC that is done just through my hands. Everything that the community sees is through this wonderful team of mine. And our dedication is just made resolute in this effort. Standing here in front of you is such an honor, particularly acknowledging a man whose whole life was a body of work that furthered the rights of people that worked the hardest, that underserved and underheard. So today I stand here, three years after probably the first time I stood in front of you, where I was just starting this nonprofit and actually was trying to get things going. And I am so honored also to have a business now in Cloverdale and to serve the community and build deep roots here. So this proclamation means so much to us. Our whole team is here to represent. And we thank you guys for welcoming us into this city, into this town. The people really opened the doors and their hearts to us. And as we move forward, we want to work with you, alongside you. And thank you so much for this acknowledgement, but it is for the greater group. The people you don't see standing here, the farm workers that continue the work, you know, those in our community that continue to struggle, that's really who deserve this award, not us. So thank you so much.
No, I just want to just chime in and just thank you for all your hard work and everything. Your contributions to our community are so appreciated. Thank you for everything you do.
Yeah, I'll repeat that. I just can't thank you guys enough for everything you're doing for our community. As our community is a majority farm worker here. And it's so appreciative for all the hard work you guys put in and everything you stand for. So thank you again.
Yeah, I think it was three years ago that I first met you, Alma, and I was just so thankful and impressed by your presentations that you gave and the bilingual offerings were just so important in bringing the community together. So thank you for what you and your team do and what your husband does to support you behind the scenes, because we all need a supportive spouse. And then also, I was just wondering if Jade had anything that she wanted to add.
I'm going to bring Jade in now. Jade, are you there right now?
Hello?
Hi Jade.
Hi.
Jade was-
She presented this for 2021 from Mayor Turner. But due to COVID, we never got to issue the proclamation. And we hear the busy Jade. So if you have anything you want to say, Jade, I would appreciate it. If not, you know, we understand and we know your hands are full right now.
If my daughter will let me. She's very talkative right now. We appreciate the proclamation last year and we're so happy that it has been given to Nuestra Comunidad this year. We know that the work that they do with the community in Sonoma County is amazing and so supportive of our farm worker community. And so we're just happy that we have another organization here in Cloverdale that supports the work and another resource that families can go to that is bicultural and bilingual. So we appreciate the thought last year, even with COVID. And we're looking forward to growth and partnership as we continue. And then on another note, Nuestra Comunidad and La Familia Sana are partnering next week, Friday, for a celebration of Cesar Chavez. And we will be handing out farm worker kits, getting ready for the harvest season. And we also have many other organizations coming up here. So we hope to see everyone there and we hope that it's a great event.
Thank you so much, Jade. We really appreciate it. Please, absolutely.
Just to make sure everybody caught that, so the celebration of Cesar Chavez will be on Friday, April 1st at 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM at Dahlia and Sage Community Market at the probably outside, at the parking, the parking area. And then the night before that, if anyone is interested, the Raven Performing Arts Center in Healdsburg is also having a conversation with Delores Huerta. And I'm not sure if there are any tickets left because it was dwindling when I registered. So those are two local events that you can attend next week.
Thank you. And I also want to thank Jade for one other thing that we started working on after last meeting that we had here and we had a translation. I call it an issue. We were unable to understand. Three people that wanted to speak publicly and I called on Jade and said, please help me find a way to make this work. And I know that Jade, through her program with La Familia Sana, is helping us work on getting a translator to come to all of our meetings. And so we'll be working out the details in the very near future to make sure that we always have representation for everyone at our meetings. Next, C3, proclamation for the Equal Pay Act. Anyone want to read it? Or would you like me to? Okay. City Council proclamation recognizing March 23rd as Equal Pay Day in Cloverdale. Whereas more than 50 years after the passage of the Equal Pay Act, women, especially minority women, continue to suffer the consequences of unequal pay. And according to the U.S. Census Bureau, women working full-time year-round in 2017 typically earned 82% of what men earned, indicating little change or progress in pay equity. And according to graduating to a pay gap, a 2012 research report by the American Association of University Women, the AAUW, the gender pay gap is evident one year after college graduation, even after controlling for factors known to affect earnings such as occupation, hours worked, and college major. And in 2009, the Lilly Ledbetter Fair Pay Act, sorry, was signed into law, which gives back to employees their day in court to challenge a pay gap. And now we must pass the Paycheck Fairness Act, which would amend the Equal Pay Act by closing loopholes and improving the law's effectiveness. And according to one estimate, college-educated women working full-time earn more than half a million dollars less than their male peers do over the course of a lifetime. And nearly four in 10 mothers are primary breadwinners in their households. And nearly two-thirds are primary or significant earners, making pay equity critical to families' economic security. And a lifetime of lower pay means women have less income to save for retirement and less income counted in a social security or pension benefit formula. And according to 2021 Annual Report, prepared by the California Commission on the Status of Women and Girls in California, compared to white men, women earn 82 cents to the dollar. And fair pay equity policies can be implemented simply and without undue costs or hardship in both the public and private sectors. And fair pay strengthens the security of families today and eases future retirement costs while enhancing the American economy. And Wednesday, March 23rd, 2022, symbolizes the time in 2022 when the wages paid to American women catch up to the wages paid to men from the previous year. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council hereby proclaim March 23rd as Equal Pay Day in Cloverdale, and I, Mayor Lands, on behalf of the City Council, urge the citizens of Cloverdale to recognize the full value of women's skills and significant contributions to the labor force and further encourages businesses to conduct an internal pay evaluation to ensure women are being paid fairly. Presented this day by myself.
I just really want to thank the mayor and staff for bringing this forward. I think just here tonight, listening to Jade call in, we recognize that it's important for women to be able to participate in meetings and engage in childcare as well. At our last meeting, we heard Erin Gore giving her presentation and saying, you know, I'm trying to get this done because I've got a babysitter at home. And, you know, equal pay and also enabling women to be able to participate in public meetings like this, either electronically or by coming in person. It's all achieving, it's all working toward the same goal, and that is equality. So I just, you know, really appreciate this. Just as a, as a woman who has worked in the workforce and seen unfair practices and being raised by a single mom who wasn't just supporting me and my two sisters, but supporting other members of her family as well. This is an important topic to acknowledge publicly and for all of us to acknowledge that we still have a lot of work yet to go. So I appreciate this resolution, you know, being brought forward. And glad to see local business owner here participating with us this evening, because I know you understand, Alma.
That's good. Anyone? Okay. All right. Just have a mouthful on the next one as well. We will move right on to the next. I don't think we've ever had three proclamations since I've been here, so. Actually, four. Okay, this is C4, proclamation for Women's History Month. If no one else wants to read, I will go. Okay. Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale proclaiming March 2022 Women's History Month. Whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of Cloverdale in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. The theme of 20, for 2022 is women providing healing, promoting hope. It's both a tribute to the ceaseless work of caregivers and frontline workers during this ongoing pandemic and also recognition of the thousands of ways that women of all cultures have provided both healing and hope throughout history. Particularly important in the establishment of early charitable philanthropic and cultural institutions in our city, women have served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. And women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but have long advocated for compassionate treatments and new directions in public health and in women's mental and physical health. And the City Council of the City of Cloverdale dedicates this month of March to all who continue to advance the importance of healers and caregivers who are helping to promote and sustain hope. And the City Council asks others to reflect on the achievements of women and girls across the centuries and pay tribute to the pioneers who paved the way. Let us recommit to help realize the deeply American vision of a more equal society where every person has a shot at pursuing the American dream. In doing so, we will advance economic growth, our health and safety, and the security of our nation and the world. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Cloverdale does hereby proclaim March 2022 as Women's History Month in Cloverdale. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand this 23rd day of March 2022 and of the City of Cloverdale, California, dated March 23rd, 2022, so ordered myself. To piggyback off of what was said, it's, I mean, we basically said it under the Equal Pay Act. It's, we're pushing forward towards a more equal society and I'm glad to see this coming forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May?
Please.
You know, I just want to take a minute and thank the current City Council members that are females and the past City Council members. I had the honor of serving with Gail Pardini Plasse, with Jess Lee Raymond. I have had the honor of knowing Marie Vandergriff, who actually was, her and Carol Chase were one of the form runners to the City Council. I mean, they did a lot of positive things. So I just wanted to say it's well appreciated, even though it's not said very often, the perspective that's brought to the City Council. So, thank you.
Melanie?
Yeah, it was just a happy accident that actually I was contacted by Maggie, who said that she had been assigned by her professor to attend council meetings. And so we got to meet at Plank and just, you know, talk about what goes on at council meetings and when the next one was. And I said, and oh, by the way, we're, you know, we were going to have a couple of resolutions in the packet that may be of interest to you. So that's just kind of, I was very gratified to see our, you know, I think COVID has been so difficult and there have been so many difficult stories. But some of the really great stories have been people who have said, you know, I took it an opportunity to do an online program and go back to school. And Maggie's an example of that. So I just really want to thank her and her professor for their civic engagement and the belief that everyone belongs at council meetings. Everyone belongs participating in council meetings and, and being well-informed and being engaged with with their local city council. So it was just, it was just a happy accident that happened. So she'll be joining us for the next couple of weeks and hopefully she'll keep coming even after she doesn't have to for her class.
Thank you, Councilmember Bagby. No other comments, we'll move forward to D, consent calendar. All items under the consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the City Council unless any council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately. Anyone have any items to pull? Wow. Seeing none, we have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the approval of the consent calendar.
Second. Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lands?
Aye. Councilmember Cruz is absent. Do we need to repeat that after each time, Jose? Okay, he used to make me do that. Thank you. All right. E, communications.
No communications were received, Mayor, after the agenda was posted.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I did receive a communication from Chrissy Sheehan, the owner and operator of the new wellness shop here on First Street. And I forwarded that email to City Manager Kelly. And I see that you responded, David, but basically she's looking for a bike rack in front of her store. So I just wanted to share that communication. I told her I would. And it, I'm sure we'll be bringing this up at the next Public Works Subcommittee to see where we are with that. So that's all.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And I want to just mention my response because it does have, involve some policy considerations for council in that particular area. The sidewalk's fairly narrow and so, you know, we probably could accommodate a bike rack. The issue is then when you place the bicycles, they tend to intrude into that accessible space that we want to, you know, try to maintain for accessibility purposes. One of my thoughts that I shared with Ms. Sheehan was to consider the concept of a parcolet. And I know that- and I know that there's some interest. We've, we've worked with Wolf House, for example, brewery, and, and, you know, trying to facilitate an outdoor dining area, and to see if there's an opportunity in that location to kind of do, do something similar. Ultimately, I think for staff, what we'd like to do is bring forward some guidelines for council to consider that would provide some guidelines and, and take into account council's perspective on how we might enable this to encourage outdoor, you know, use of the outdoor space, and, and looking at, you know, obviously, the, the, it would, it would involve public space, including parking areas. So there's some, you know, policy considerations there, but it also enables, kind of enlivenes the street, provide, could provide for additional bicycle parking without affecting that, that important accessible space in the walkway. So not to get too deep in that, I think that's something that the Public Works Subcommittee has already suggested we bring forward with some, some guidelines that then can be recommended to council. I, I think it's something, it's worth exploring and could add value to our, to our downtown businesses in terms of some of that, you know, enlivening that outdoor space, but to do it in a manner that's safe and within the council's, you know, guidelines.
Great. Look forward to that coming back from the Public Works under our discussion or actions. We have, under F, no public hearings, so we'll move into G, new business. G1, Proposal to Adopt a Military Equipment Use Policy Required in Assembly Bill 481.
Great. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Before you tonight is a staff report for review and discussion of a military equipment use policy as required in Assembly Bill 481. On September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, Governor Gavin Newsom signed into law Assembly Bill 481 that became effective on January first, two thousand twenty-two, which would require a law enforcement agency to obtain council approval for a military equipment use policy prior to taking certain actions relating to funding, acquisition, or use of military equipment. What we're going to be really addressing here tonight is our use of certain military equipment that qualifies. The intent of AB 481 was to protect the public safety, welfare, and civil rights and civil liberties before military equipment is funded, acquired, or used. The police department is in possession and currently uses equipment that qualifies under the Military Equipment Per Government Code Section 770(c), and therefore, this bill requires approval for future use of that equipment. Some of you might be familiar with the former 1033 program, which is now the LISO program. Prior to my arrival here, Cloverdale Police Department did participate in that program, obtained some surplus military equipment. That has since been returned. We returned that last year. We no longer participate in the LISO program and won't moving forward. With that being said, in seeking approval, the city council, law enforcement, as yourself, submit a proposed military use policy and make those documents available on the agency's website at least thirty days prior to any public hearing concerning the military equipment at issue. Attached in this item is the military use equipment policy that was drafted, and I think you will find that it's pretty thorough, and it also lists the military equipment that we currently possess. Some of those that you will find in there, we do not use, but they have to be reported on here because we simply possess them, and they're qualifying. But they, we certainly are not ones that we use either by choice. We don't want to put those out into the field and/or we are not trained in them. So as outlined in Government Code Section 771, this bill further requires council approval by way of an ordinance adopting a military equipment use policy at a regular meeting prior to engaging in and using any newer existing military equipment for a purpose in a manner or by a person not previously approved by council. So in essence, what, what's required in this assembly bill is, once you approve this, I must post it to our city website for thirty days. Then it has to come back to council for a public hearing, and that's what we're looking for here tonight. If you, as I mentioned earlier, per the Section 772, you will see that that, the military use policy that I drafted has all of the elements in it as required, and this would be what you would receive on an annual basis. I don't anticipate that we would be seeking the purchase of any new equipment, but that's also part of this bill. Annually, you would get that report if there are any changes. I know this is complex, there's a lot to it, but I was hoping that at least you would be able to look at the military use policy that was drafted and see what equipment we are, we do have and are required to report. And council's asked to, if you have any questions for review and discussion at this time, I'm happy to answer.
So just, just for clarification, Chief, if you could, military equipment is not necessarily equipment obtained through the military. It's equipment that is defined as military equipment under law.
That is correct. And this law-
Yeah. It's a little kind of misleading when you read that, because it kind of infers like, you know, it's all military related, and it really isn't. It's, it's just defined under the law as a military piece of equipment, but-
Yes.
So, okay.
And, and I'm certain that there was federal, like I explained in the LISO program and the formerly the 1033, 1033 program, where much of this would apply to that. However, we don't possess that, but because we possess items that are listed in that law, we are therefore required, if we continue to use it, to have a policy, and that's what this is about. And if you look into that policy, you'll see that our drone is a perfect example of that. That is a qualifying military item, which we possess, we use, and will, would likely intend to continue to use. So therefore, this would be a requirement for this before any further use would have to be approved by council.
Thank you. Please.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, yeah, I think on the face of this, this could look very controversial, but I, and I, I hope I don't offend anybody by saying this, but I really see this as a housekeeping issue, because I think number one on the list that I noticed was the drone. If we want to have a drone, it is classified as military-grade equipment, and obviously that is important for community-based policing, that we have that capability. I also, you know, took a look at the, the other categories, and it's just completely in line with our policy of community-based policing. We just need to comply with state law and do the reporting, so I'm, I'm comfortable with the, going forward with this tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I, I know we spoke earlier in reference to this item, but you said something in your report, I, I just want to clarify. If, either way, whether there's changes or no changes, the inventory list comes back to us for approval?
Yes. So, and then I would have to, I would have to provide a report to you annually on equipment, and if you look at the report that I submitted now, it would be very similar to this. It discusses the need, the purpose, the expense, everything that's required under 77, 7072 would be found in that report that you would get annually. And as I, as I anticipated, I don't expect, at least in the very near future, that you get these annual reports, that we would be looking to add to this. But what you see currently is what we operate with on a daily basis, with the exception of the ones that I indicated not put into the field for service, because we are not trained.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'll just say something real quick. The, the things that we have, I'm glad we have them, because you want to have more tools in your toolbox other than your sidearm or long rifles and things along those lines. And knowing how a lot of these work, it is kind of a distraction, you saying it's military surplus military equipment. It is not. It is things that actually will keep people alive, not just us, but the suspects and people we're trying to contact, so.
And, and I'll just add to, the, the law is fairly clear why this bill was passed and what the importance of it is. What I'm very fortunate is, we don't see a lot of those similar incidents here in Cloverdale, which makes us very fortunate, but nonetheless, we will do what-
But it only takes one, and they've been here, is the thing. So it's good to know that we have the ability to keep us safe.
Good. Okay. Nothing? Yeah. Any public comment? I don't see any hands on the screen, anyone in the audience. Seeing none, bring it back.
Thank you, Chief.
You. All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we authorize staff to bring back to the city council a public hearing item.
Okay.
I'll, I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Thank you. I didn't see that it was a direction, I don't, or action item, I just want to make sure, sorry. Oh, just to provide alternative direction, that's where I read it wrong. I apologize. Please.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lanz?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to G2, Consider, Consider Modification to Adopted Cannabis Business Tax Rates.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This is an item that was directed by council to return tonight for, for formal action. By way of background, at your night, March ninth council meeting, the council received a presentation from the, the Cloverdale cannabis industry, wherein the, they submitted a request to modify the current excise tax rate from its current rate of four point five percent on gross receipts to a tiered rate system. The, the presentation by the cannabis industry recommended a tiered system that was based on the, kind of the, the permit type, including cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, and retail. That is outlined in your agenda. In terms of the requested action tonight, is to consider a resolution that would modify the, the existing tax rate that was adopted by resolution and, and set in place the tiered rate structure that was proposed by the cannabis industry. So included in your packet is, is a resolution that proposes those, those adjustments. I do want to note that there was one license type that we had to kind of look at a little bit more specifically, and that was the type twelve or micro-business license type, and that was because the micro-business under, under the state regulations comprises three different kind of subtypes. And so what we proposed is that the tax rate structure vary based on the, the sub-license type of the activity that's, that's permitted under that, that type, that permit twelve, that type twelve license or, or micro-business. We do have a number of micro-businesses within our community, so we wanted to make sure that that was, that was clear, because that was not specifically addressed in the presentation by the cannabis industry. I don't think it deviates from the request, it just spells out that the, it would be dependent on the, the business activity of the micro-business, what tax rate would apply, and it would be incumbent upon the micro-businesses to, to report that activity based on, on permit type, or, or based on the percentage of, of activity that's conducted. So with that said, that included in your packet is the existing resolution. We also included, for your reference, the original presentation that was provided along, along with the ordinance. Again, recalling that there were some requests that would require revisions to the ordinance, and, and those are things we're going to, we, we need to take a further look at, but council did direct us to, to, to bring back a proposed, proposed rate adjustment, which can be done by adopting the resolution this evening. One of the other requests by council was to do an analysis of the, the impact of the modification of the tax rate. We obviously did not do a, a forecast of future cannabis activity and, and, and try to assess, you know, what the impact of the rates going forward would be. But what we did do is look back in time, if these rates had been in effect, so that you could see the difference between what, what the cannabis industry paid and what they would have paid had the rates that are recommended or, or requested by the cannabis industry had been in effect. And I, I think what that, that analysis shows is that the, there would have been a fairly significant difference in, in cannabis rate revenue that would have been paid to the city had the council adopted the rates that are proposed at the time when the rate, the cannabis excise tax was originally established. Of course, we don't know if that, that, that the history is repeat, repeatable, and we, we have heard from the cannabis industry that they are experiencing, you know, some, some economic distress. But, you know, this does kind of give you some data on which to consider your decision tonight. I did want to note that subsequent to the, the discussion, council on, on March ninth, the county did take action to address specifically cultivation. That seems to be an area where cultivators, cannabis cultivators seem to be particularly impacted, given the current market, maybe, in my opinion, more so than, than others. But the, the board of supervisors did take action to provide some relief to the, to cultivators and, and doing so, you know, basically reduce the, the tax rate and put a, a period of time when that tax rate is not, not applicable. That's not what we're proposing tonight, but included in your packet is a resolution that would, would set the rates as, as requested by, by the cannabis industry. I, I do want to note that, you know, can, the council does have the flexibility to adjust those rates as you, as you see fit, in accordance with the, the adopted tax measure by the voters, which enables the council to set the, the excise tax rate from zero percent to, to up to ten percent. I don't think that's what you're entertaining necessarily tonight, but I just want to ensure that you have the flexibility. And, and if council sees fit, you can, you can certainly adjust it as it's provided for in the resolution, which reflects the request by, by the cannabis industry, but you do have the discretion to, to change those rates as, as you may see fit or based on your, your deliberation this evening. So that's, that's the end of my, end of staff's report, Mayor. I'll return it back to you.
Thank you, David. Who wants to go first?
No, I'm comfortable with it. I, you know, I appreciate you getting that information as far as projected revenues and the difference. That's really what I wanted to know as we enter budget. Well, certainly had nothing to do with my decision on the need for this. I think it's important, we'll have to revisit this annually, I think. It's something that's important, but I, I have really no questions. We spent considerable time at our last meeting discussing it, so.
I'm, I'm happy to move forward with this, given the information and subsequent information that, that we were given, especially the information that the Sinema County Board of Supervisors is acknowledging the difficulties, and I'm, I'm happy to see that, and hopefully we'll be moving forward with this. You know, before I was elected, I remember I was coming to the meetings, we did this because of compassionate care, and we were out ahead of all of the other jurisdictions, and I think that that's why we were just a little off in our, I don't, I don't think, I don't think we did anything wrong, but because we were out ahead with the rate from, of other jurisdictions who subsequently, and I think it's a huge compliment, copied our, our structure, probably with many thanks to Erin Gore. I also just want to acknowledge the industry in this town. It's primarily owned by, they're primarily women-owned business in this community, and, you know, it's important to me that we make sure that we keep this industry, because once you lose an industry, you lose it, and once you lose, you know, cannabis dispensaries that are, people need to get their medicine, once we lose them, they're having to travel for, you know, yet another product that's, would possibly not be available in Cloverdale. So I think that, you know, we, we discussed this at length, I think we talked about all of the different options, and again, just to me, I want to keep the jobs here. That's, the, the tax revenue is great, it's gravy, it's a bonus, but the jobs are worth their weight, their weight in gold. So I'm happy to see this move forward this evening.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, you know, this is quite a bit of revenue that, that the city is giving up, for lack of a better phrase, but I truly support it. I think one of the things we need to do, as Councilmember Paula stated, is we have to revisit this on an annual basis. We're provided with the information as far as what the sales are, and as we see it tick up, if it should start to- up, if it should start ticking up, then it's time to maybe readjust them. But, you know, on a temporary basis, I don't have a problem supporting this item. Like Councilmember Bagby said, the jobs are good-paying jobs, and we need to keep those in Cloverdale. Thank you.
David, I don't know who we have to answer the questions. If Susie's online, or if it's you, we'll find out. Can you explain to me why one department, or one portion of the, like, say cultivation or manufacturing, we get a lower percentage than the actual retail when it's hitting the customer? Because the retail has the ability to add on to it for the customer to make up that difference of the percentage. And that's where it hits the pocketbook the hardest of the person buying the product that needs it. When I look at this, the cultivation and the manufacturing are the ones that, it seems like they're trying to get a little extra on this to me, and maybe I just don't understand it. And so I would look at people with the distribution and the retail, when it's actually getting to our customers, or to the patients, that are still taking the 3.5% versus a 1% with the retail. If it was up to me right now, I would be looking for across-the-board percentage to all of them the same, and cutting the retail when it gets to the customer. So can somebody explain to me why I'm wrong on here? And then I'll go to you, Sean. I know, I see you, and I appreciate you, so I'm, I know you'll jump up and give me an earful, and I love it. But David or Susie, if you guys want to go first?
Mayor, I'm happy to kind of opine on your comments. I don't think what you're saying is necessarily wrong, it's really, it's a policy consideration in, you know, where you set the tax rate by Permit type is, you know, well within the discretion of council. You know, I think maybe, you know, in terms of the different Permit types, one way to look at it is, with your retail, is that that is kind of a pass-through, in a sense that the end consumer ultimately pays that product, pays that tax. And whereas for distribution and manufacturing, it's paid directly by the business, and so it's, it has the effect of increasing cost of goods sold, and so, you know, it kind of, it goes right to their bottom line. And so there's a difference there, I think, in terms of how it affects, the tax rates affects the business model. With that said, you know, one thing that's kind of, you can see in the table pretty clearly is, in terms of the, again, looking, the historical analysis of the tax rate, the most significant contribution of tax rate revenue was by non-retail. And so, you know, that's where the most significant, what's being proposed in the resolution decreases are to those particular Permit types, and therefore that's where the biggest decline in excise tax is going to occur, is within distribution and manufacturing. We don't have a, we don't really have cultivation here currently, not because it's not permitted, but we just, it's, cities aren't usually big cultivation-type Permit holders. But, so I think what we see is, the differences, those businesses, that it's kind of a direct tax on their bottom line versus a pass-through. And so if, you know, if council felt that it was more important to relieve taxes on, you know, consumers, then you might target more that retail rate. And, you know, that has less of an impact here, I think, just based on the analysis that was performed by our finance director, than the change in rate for the non-retail, non-retail users. So I hope I answered your question, that's kind of.
You did, and I'm going to just kind of piggyback on it, because I see Susie's on, and I appreciate you being here for this. Aaron said that it was about $250 for a pound of marijuana, she called it flour, so flour product. So that's significant drop. It's 5% of what it used to be when, you know, they started this. And to me, we're sitting here taxing them 3%. So the ones that are losing money.
Is that her?
Three and a half. Well, Sean has his hand up.
Is that Aaron with her hand up?
It is.
Well, great, let me finish, please, and then we'll go to Sean, and then we'll bring Aaron in, because I really want to, now, I want to understand why these guys are getting different percentages. So a cultivator who is making a lot less money to do the exact same thing is getting taxed harder than somebody that's paying less money for product to create it and put it back out to the patient. So I'm trying to figure out why that cultivator would be charged more than somebody that's buying product at a lesser rate to put it back out there. I'd rather see cultivators, distributors, and retailers with a lower rate if I had to choose. Otherwise, personally, I want to see them the same across the board, because it should be a fair thing here.
Well, I think that in her presentation at the last meeting, she went into considerable detail as to why the, specifically why the different rates, but, I mean, I don't want to speak for her.
No, and I.
And if she's here, and she can, you know, if she can explain, then.
Could we have Aaron brought in, so we can talk to her? Good evening, Aaron, how are you?
How are you?
Good, thank you. I know you've been listening, and you probably are chomping at the bit to answer my question for me.
Did you repeat your question for me?
Yeah, so my question is this, we're looking at different percentages for each style of the business here, the cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, and retail. Right now, the cultivation, I believe you said, was about $250 for a pound of your product, which is way down from what it used to be. Why are we taxing them harder than we are taxing people that are purchasing product at a lower rate to create the products than they were before? And why are we taxing our patients the highest rate versus, I mean, not to be rude, Aaron, but you're a part of the manufacturing, why is manufacturing getting the biggest cut? Please explain it.
Yeah, sure. So remember, patient tax is all pass-through tax. So, look, at the end of the day, if you want to lower everyone's tax, bravo, bravo. We were trying to figure out what made the most sense for the city to be a good partner. In cultivation, you're limited by the square footage, so we looked at it as a revenue impact. When you're doing distribution or manufacturing, you make more money overall, so the percentage of tax as a gross receipt nut is larger than the percentage of tax to a cultivator or to a retailer. Because to a cultivator or retailer, cultivation's cap that size, retail's cap that number of people through the door, right? And so, on average, those are pretty steady state tax, like your growth year over year over year is limited. You basically, you're right, the cultivators have been highly impacted in the price point wise, so like lowering cultivation, the excise tax for cultivation is a great thing, and I wouldn't ever advocate against it. But the cultivator growth potential to the city is flat. Versus a distributor and a manufacturer, they put a lot of products through the door and out the door, so distributors and manufacturers on an aggregate make significantly more gross receipts, and therefore, a lower tax rate still brings in a larger amount of money than a cultivator or a retailer. So it's about the business, it's not about the flat tax rate comparative to the different types of businesses. So like, the other thing I think's important to keep in mind, as I was listening, I heard you say, oh, well, your inputs are reduced significantly because the price of cultivation has decreased. You're correct, but in manufacturing, typically cannabis inputs are minimal, so like, we're making edibles, so edible inputs are, hold on, hold on. Could you guys give me a minute? Sorry, edible inputs are like 3% of my gross cause, of my cause for manufacturing my edible products. The number one cost of goods for me is labor, followed by packaging, followed by chocolate, followed by sugar. The actual cannabis concentrate is very low, and that's not dependent on the price. That's not because it was expensive one day and cheap another day. That's because I'm using trim or a waste derivative of flour, and we're not selling jarred, I'm not manufacturing jarred flour or whatever. So the impact to me on the price of flour in the market only really hurts my supply chain partners, like my cultivators, like my distributors, like my retailers. It doesn't make really much difference to me, and the impact on the price for flour really isn't that large to me. For me, as a manufacturer, my biggest limiting growth potential is, I think, for cultivators, distributors, and manufacturers, is the tax that we pay to the city hits our bottom line. It's not a pass-through tax, we don't get to pass it. I know, baby, it's in the bathroom. Mommy's on, mommy's on a phone call, can you, can Nana help you? Sorry, you guys, I'm in Hawaii.
No, we're all good. Just take your time.
Um, yeah, so like, the biggest thing is the retail, the retailer is a pass-through tax, right? Like, it's people physically coming to Cloverdale to buy products, or products physically being delivered in Cloverdale. So like, distributor, manufacturer, and cultivator's products are sold across the state. So like, you know, my products are sold across the state, and I'm paying tax to the city of Cloverdale for products sold across the state. So that's where like, the different, the different functionalities of the businesses matter, because the different revenue potentials of the businesses matter, because you're looking at ultimately, at the end of the day, a net tax revenue to you based on the size of the business, and a 3% tax on a manufacturer or distributor versus a 3% tax on a cultivator, the manufacturer or distributor are going to have a lot larger business, or a lot larger business growth potential than the cultivator, because the cultivator is limited in size. The cultivator has one license, and one license only allows X amount of cultivation. So they're static, year to year to year, even though the price will vary, right? So the manufacturer, you can put as much product as you want through the door, the distributor, same. So those are larger-volume, higher-velocity businesses across the state of California, so lower tax rate, because it's a much bigger gross business.
Makes sense, Aaron, thank you so much, I appreciate your answer.
Mr. Mayor?
Please go ahead.
Just one thought, if I could, you raised a lot of good issues. You know, going back when the tax rate was set, this was all new to us. We had really no information on what it was going to generate, how it was going to work. We were looking at it, trying to set a mechanism to make sure it paid its own way for the code enforcement, and all the inspections, and all the things required. It really seems like you raised a lot of good questions. I'm not sure this is the venue to try to get all those answers, but I do think it needs to be revisited, and maybe take a more thorough review of the whole process. I'm not sure, you know, that shouldn't hold this up for tonight, but I would recommend that we may want to consider putting this maybe on the Admin Finance Subcommittee agenda to really work through those tough questions, to figure out, are we, did we set it up correctly? Now that we have some history on it, does it need to be tweaked or changed? And this would be a good time, but I think it's going to take a little bit of time and thought, and a lot of answers. And so I'd just like to suggest, maybe we take a look at it.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to support that. I think that what we need to do tonight is go ahead and respond to, it's just, it's a market adjustment, and I, those are, you know, those are all fair questions that you have, but it really is, you know, volume and economies of scale, I mean, that's the difference, and that's why I think that the rates as the industry suggested, and it was done in, you know, consultation amongst the local Cloverdale businesses, but also looking at what the other jurisdictions have done after they followed our lead to get into the cannabis business. So it's just, I think it's just a reasonable thing to do, to just set up a, kind of a self-audit schedule for reviewing the rates and the processes, and I'm comfortable with it going to finance and administration, maybe just once a year. We just do a self-check-in, or our process is working, or is Susie happy with her relationships with the businesses, is it all, you know, is enforcement going, going well? And we just, you know, put it on the to-do, we put it on the revolving to-do list that we just, it's something that we look at annually, I'm comfortable with. Is that what you were suggesting?
That's what I was suggesting, because the questions, the whys, and I think, like I say, we really had no history, and it was just kind of taking our best guess based on what we knew at the time. But now, we know a lot more, and now it may be time to revisit those, and that's what I'm thinking. You know, you raised great questions. I think those questions need to be thought out, laid out, and answered, and we may want to come back and revisit this, like you mentioned, on an annual basis, to make those adjustments.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to recommend the item, and then also give additional direction to staff, to just put that on the to-do, on our annual to-do list.
Could I have a couple more questions? Do you want to do it before, and discuss, and then open to public, or how do you? I mean, it's fine, either way's fine with me. If you want to go, and we can hit a second and keep moving forward, or?
I'm happy to, I'm happy to read it, and recommend the item by title only, and then we can open it for discussion.
No, well, I'm still, I'm still coming to the public, and that's why I asked, if she wants to do this, or we'll still come to the public and still ask more questions. I got you, I promise. That's why I said, either way, we're going to get to you.
Jose, what would make you happy?
I actually, I was going to also present a potential amendment to the resolution. I think the resolution doesn't cover all of your businesses, or all the potential businesses that are covered under your ordinance. For example, somebody may come in and try to get a business license for testing, for a lab. Many jurisdictions have their own percentage for lab. Also wanted to make clear, and I think that the intent here was, that delivery also be captured under the retail component. If I'm correct, David, wanted to make sure to add, you know, retail slash delivery, and then potentially a catch-all category, like for the labs or any other kind of types of businesses. It could simply state other cannabis businesses pursuant to Chapter 3.46 of the Cloverdale Municipal Code, and that could be at 1%, given that you're usually talking about the less impactful businesses like Tesla, testing labs, and whatnot. But I just didn't want to have kind of a question if somebody came in, wait, what's the tax for them?
Would you mind if I asked a couple more questions, and then let Sean public speak? Chief, any idea of how much it costs, or what, for your enforcement, your, you know, inspections and things along those lines?
I wouldn't have those figures right now, I'd have to go back and look at our time spent on there. I will tell you that we haven't done a lot of, particularly in the last couple of years, not a lot of the inspections. We have participated, but I'd have to go back and give you some numbers for that.
Thank you, sir. Can I open up? You want to go, or you want to?
Well, I was just going to say, those inspections are billed separately, correct?
Vice Mayor, if I can answer that question. The ordinance establishes that we issue the permits on an annual basis, and as such, there's an annual permit fee for renewal. The annual permit fee is intended to cover the costs of that inspection work and/or audit work. Now, one of the things we did do with council support was reduce the annual fee by half, based on reducing the, a number of audits that would be performing. I think the goal there was to ensure that we really audit all the cannabis businesses, kind of year one, establish a baseline to address compliance, but it's a lot of work, and it wasn't necessarily something that, you know, that we view the industry needs to do every single year, more, more kind of an every-other-year program. So you're very right, Vice Mayor, that the staff time for those annual inspections is covered in the permit fee, the annual permit fee, or annual renewal process. Now, if there are additional call-outs, or concerns, or issues, which there have been, that's where I think, you know, it, you know, if police department has to respond to a community complaint or something, that's not within the annual permit inspection, that's where it's, you know, beyond that, and that's, that's a, you know, departmental time that's not captured in that annual fee.
Thank you. If you don't mind, I'll open it up to the public, and?
Oh, absolutely not. Roberts rules of order.
Mr. Bovee, please.
Good evening, Sean Bovee, Cloverdale, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Kelly, Mr. Sanchez, Chief Ferguson, good to see you. So I got a number of issues, if we could start right from the top. Who is the Cloverdale Cannabis Industry? Who makes up this body?
I'm happy to answer that question, Mayor. That is not a formal entity, it's a general reference by staff, that we were approached by a group of representatives, and they kind of said, you know, we're, you know, representative of the, not all, but of generally speaking, the Cloverdale Cannabis Industry. It was a way of staff trying to reflect the industry, and certainly wasn't meant to capture all businesses, or say, you're part- to capture, uh, all, all businesses, or say you're part of, that there was collaboration on all parties. This was again, just, I think, as it was represented.
Mr. Kelly, if you could, collaboration with whom? Who, who are these parties? Erin Gore, I know is one of them.
Uh, I, I, I would, I would kind of pump that question to, to Mrs. Gore, if we could.
Sure, I don't, anybody can answer it. Councilmember Bagby seems to know a lot, she met with them, she's pretty sold. Councilmember Bagby, could you tell me who is, uh, who makes up the Cloverdale cannabis industry?
I never met with them, and is that in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, Jose? I'm, I'm not supposed to be questioned directly from a member of the public, am I?
I'm sorry, I'll retract my question, let's move on. So, I think that it's been made clear that we don't know who the Cloverdale cannabis industry is?
Actually, I'm curious, I'd like to know the answer to that question, Jose. Am I, am I able to, am I supposed to be questioned by individual members of the public about my actions or my behaviors?
Through the mayor.
Please.
I think that, as far as public comment, the public has a certain amount of time to speak. Um, those are questions that could be, that could be, uh, towards the council. The council then, after the, the comments are made, then the council could ask staff to answer questions, or answer questions themselves. The mayor has the ability to also limit the back and forth, and just take public comments, and then bring it back to the council.
So I respectfully ask the mayor to limit those sorts of comments that?
Okay, so then what I will ask is you direct all questions to me?
Sure.
All right, you can ask me the questions, if you have, even if they're about other council members, just ask me about that.
You got it, absolutely. Mr. Mayor, if you would, please, ask Councilmember Bagby if she's familiar with who makes up the cannabis, Cloverdale cannabis industry. And again, I defer to Erin Gore. What I'm really looking for here is that you've been given accurate, honest, and transparent information from the Cloverdale cannabis industry. As many of you are well aware, we've had issues before. Uh, Ms. Gore does not represent me in any way at all. Um, I want to take this moment to remind you that I would take anything she says with some concern in respect to what we've been through in the past. I was not in any way informed of a discussion in respect to cannabis tax. No emails, no phone calls, I, I was unaware that there was such an industry in this community. So to come to find this, I was a little shocked. Um, I was even more shocked to find some of the information that Ms. Gore thought she would share. Uh, right off the bat, $250 a pound, I don't disagree, but I disagree. Currently, the market value for a cannabis cultivator who knows what they are doing is upwards of $3,000 a pound. So to make a case based on information that is not relative to, you know, the request, I have issue. Uh, personally, I don't support a reduction in tax. Personally, I don't agree at all with Councilmember Bagby that we've done something compassionate for our community. We haven't. Let me be clear, whether it's me, a retailer, whether it's Erin, a manufacturer, or whether it's a cultivator, you know who's paying your 4.5% tax? Your neighbors, your community, okay? That is the business model across the board. I can reassure you that Erin Gore's products, her price is reflective of the fact that she knows she'll have to pay that tax. And you know who that gets passed on to? Yeah, your neighbors. Mayor Lance, I support very much the idea that it be not a tiered, arbitrary sort of, let's try to convince you that we should be taxed less or more. I don't like the comparisons made of large cities and counties to Cloverdale. Uh, I take issue with the idea that we'll give no more money to the police department. Uh, I, for one, am very supportive of the idea that the police department comes by my location, checks on me. I've had a number of times cars parked there, the police department stopped and called me, "Sean, do you know what's going on here?" I'm not supportive at all of money being diverted to, um, programs that somehow make inequitable, uh, mend to the, the harm done by the insane, I, that's, no, I, I don't support that at all. I really wish that I'd have been consulted, I, I'm concerned with, you know?
About 30 seconds more, please, okay?
Oh, sure.
Thank you, sir.
Let me make sure that I just covered all my, my substantial issues. Uh, I get, please, take some time, honestly, there's no rush. Um, I mean, Erin Gore just received $7 million, she's in Hawaii. Something tells me she's not struggling that badly. I mean, I run a delivery service, I have a micro-business license for the nursery, I'm not here asking to reduce my tax. If you do, do it for your neighbors, do it for your community, not for Erin Gore, not for me, not for any cannabis cultivator. And continue to give that police department the money, because that's who is going to effectively create a much more sustainable recreational market. Um, if you do nothing else, give your medical patients a break, because to Ms. Bagby's definition of a compassionate care, they still get charged 4.5%, just like your recreational users. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just ask Sean a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Sean, how are you affected by this change? Could you share that with us?
I'm not.
So Sean, let me, let me tell you what?
Yeah, I'm not affected by it, your, your neighbors are, sir.
Let me tell you what's being proposed for you, just, just so you, just so?
Yes, of course.
So under the cultivation, it goes from four and a half to three?
Yes, sir.
Under manufacturing, it goes from four and a half to one?
Yes.
Under the distribution, it goes from four and a half to one?
Yes.
And retail, from four and a half to three and a half?
Those are substantial decreases, and, um, I'm sorry, too, some of the comparisons you make in respect to a retail storefront and a delivery service are not fair. I don't get that kind of clientele. I don't have those people walking through my door all day long. Why should my customers be charged the same tax? That doesn't make any sense.
Okay, so you would be affected by this, you would go down to 3.5?
I would, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And again, I'm sorry, I, I just want to make sure I'm clear, every single time I can catch you, Mr. Walter, I personally will not be affected. I don't pay that tax. My customers do, our neighbors, our community pays that tax. And two, again, I want to make sure, because of some of the confusion and things we've had in the past, please, take your time, okay? I mean, the last time we did this sort of thing, it created some gnarly wounds in our community. Councilmember Bagby and I still have some serious beef.
Mr., Mr. Sanchez, could you comment on, um, could you advise the mayor on how he is supposed to handle direct attacks to other council members?
I, I, this isn't my first one, and there is some direct attack on that. I understand that you didn't like to hear your name, I get it.
Uh, could, Mr. Mayor, could we have, um, the city attorney address that issue, please? So that we can finally address the issue?
And through the mayor. The mayor, the mayor, you chair the meeting, you have the ability to have folks to, again, like you did before, to please address any comments to you, please don't, don't have any direct kind of attacks to council members. As you know, you have that ability as chairing the meeting, um, keeping the, obviously, the comments focused to what the topic at hand.
Correct, thank you, sir.
I would respectfully ask the mayor to, um, to, to finally put an end to the personal insults that are experienced by all council members, by different members of the public, because there's just no place it in a public meetings.
Duly noted.
Please, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, when, when it was explained to us in the presentation that Erin Gore did, um, at, at the last meeting, um, you know, I was, uh, I'm under the impression, and I know I'm right, that that 3.5 or 4.5 is passed along to the customer on the retail end. Um, but nevertheless, what that does is, of course, it increases the price of the product, uh, because the customer doesn't, doesn't really care, he's looking at the overall price for him to walk out of that store with that product. So, um, uh, you know, that's why the retail is, is, uh, also being dropped by, uh, 1%. Does that make any sense? So, okay.
Yes, it did, absolutely did, actually, it's 100%. Please.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, I don't disagree with, with anything that was said this evening, I think we're not asking to increase the tax, we're trying to lower it. We're not the only jurisdiction that's done that, the county has just done that very same thing. I think I, I just want to reiterate, I think we really need to have some work done on this. We really do need to get all the licensees in the room to take a look at it. It shouldn't stop this from moving forward. We, it comes back, we can adjust it, either way, up or down, at any time. I also got a, one thing that was said at the last meeting that was a little concerning, because I remember we spent considerable time when we were going through the ordinance, is about making sure it was enforced. How do we know if they're complying with the ordinance? And I remember Ms. Gore did mention that that was not being done at all times. And that was a little concerning, and I really think we need to just take a look at the ordinance, take a look at the tax, take a look at what we estimate that we're going to receive, because that was really what the purpose of the tax was, for the enforcement, and, and having the, uh, code enforcement in place, and making it pay its own way, I guess, is the best way. So, you know, I have no problems moving this forward this evening, but I really do think it should be assigned to a subcommittee, we should, or, uh, maybe a special work session, bring in all the licensees, let's talk about all the things that you raised, listen to all the licensees, good, bad, different, and then we can come back and make another decision if we want to tweak it again. So I just don't see that we're going to get there this evening.
If you're, if you're bringing it back, um, again, just, I'm happy to, to recommend the item, and just as a comparison jurisdiction, um, you know, part of, part of the presentation and the research that was done by, um, members of the, the industry who spoke at the last meeting, you know, Catati, which is a much, slightly smaller city than Cloverdale, their rates are 2% for cultivation, 1% for manufacturing, 0% for distribution, and 3% for retail. Ours are still higher. I, I think that the recommend, recommendations in the hindsight of the comparison jurisdiction, which is something that we engage in, we compare salaries, we compare contracts, we compare all of that with jurisdictions around us, large and small, and it's completely appropriate to do that. I'd be happy to, um, move the, the item with, as amended, this evening, and then, of course, you know, go back and get us on a review cycle, just to make sure that we are in line, because it's an infant industry. It's actually kind of a toddler at this point, it's just beginning to get off the ground, so I think it warrants, um, you know, just a, a regular review of our procedures, a regular review of our rates in comparison with what the, the market is doing. Um, so I would, I would support, you know, going ahead and assigning it to, you know, regular review schedule on one of the subcommittees, and, and of course, you know, recommend the, the item as amended this evening.
And I would just like to say, I just think that these percentages are premature, and not given with, uh, factual basis, and so I have a hard time supporting it at this point, but I won't continue so.
Well, what's your, I'm just curious, when you look at the research that was done, and the, the rates for, that are given by the, um, nearby jurisdiction, how are they not factual?
They're missing information.
Well, and could you please control the meeting, Mr. Mayor?
Give me three seconds, please. What?
Can you, can you, can you please control the audience?
Okay, we need to take a five-minute break at 7:21.
Mr. Mayor, I'm asking you to control the audience.
We'll come back to order at 7:26. There's no more further public, no more comments up here. Does anyone have a motion?
I'll second.
We need to have the motion first.
I'll second Councilmember Bagby's motion.
As amended.
As amended.
Mayor, I just want to note, our city clerk was going to make a comment.
She had, I don't think it ever went down.
Jill, but I mean, we could, we could double check if you'd like.
She spoke though.
She did. I don't know if it was a re, a re-raise for the public comment. I, I asked for her to comment.
She spoke in addressing the question.
I just think.
During public comments, she raised her hand.
Oh, did she do it again?
It's, it's over.
Okay. Well, at this point, we, we're just going to move forward, Jill. We don't need to have that comment.
Can I read the, the amendments for the record?
Yes.
I know the motion was as amended. We'll have adding, just so we don't miss other types of cannabis business allowed by the, by your chapter. I know even in, in the title, I would like to kind of just add where it has, where it starts reading, and we'll put it in, but for distribution, it has 1% for distribution, 3.5% for retail, adding there 3.5% for delivery, comma, and then it'll say tiered rate for micro businesses, as it says right now, all the way to the end. And then also adding, and 1% for all other, for all other commercial cannabis businesses.
They so moved.
And then it'll have that.
And more.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It'll have that in section two. It'll have another line to have delivery, 3 and 1 half percent. And then it'll have another line, other cannabis businesses allowed under chapter 3.46 of the Cloverdale Municipal Code, and that'll be 1%. And that's to cover the testing and other, other, those low impact type of businesses.
So seconded.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Mayor Lands?
No.
Councilmember Cruz is absent.
So, Mr. Mayor, we'd like to ask that this be placed as a permanent item on a subcommittee agenda. And I think a lot of questions that you had, as well as including all the permities in our city into the conversation, needs to happen. Like I say, this, this initial setting was done before this went into operation. I think it's time to really review it, to take a look at what's working. So, thank you.
Mayor, I just want to note on the record that the resolution modifying the rates was approved by council on a vote of three to one with one absent.
Thank you, David.
And, and staff does note the direction provided by council to refer this to the Finance Admin and Police Subcommittee for further discussion.
Thank you.
And it should be an annual item to go over these rates on that agenda for the subcommittee. Thank you.
And for, further on that, since we're discussing it now, instead of on the future and subcommittees, I'm thinking that maybe we should actually ask that committee to meet with anyone involved in any of these cannabis companies.
Aye.
Or categories, I guess you'd say.
Excellent.
Moving on, G3, agreement with R3 Consulting Group Incorporated to conduct a special rate review of Recology's rate adjustment application and a performance review of the franchise agreement between the city and Recology.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. So tonight, I'd like council to receive a presentation from Recology's Senator Moran. Recology Senator Moran is our franchise waste hauler here in the city of Cloverdale. The, the presentation is going to address their submittal of a special rate review request. The action that staff is requesting council take tonight is to adopt a resolution that would approve an agreement with R3 Consulting Group to conduct a, a special rate review of the Recology's rate adjustment application, as well as a performance review of the franchise agreement between the city and Recology to ensure that they're complying with all the regulatory requirements and operational performance requirements. There, I just want to mention that there are some additional changes that you're going to see presented in the presentation by Recology this evening. Those aren't specifically before you this, in terms of requested actions, but we, we do have plans to bring those forward. But I wanted to introduce those proposed changes, because I think they, they all relate and interrelate and ultimately affect our franchise agreement with Recology. A little bit of background, in, in 2011, the council approved a franchise agreement with Redwood Empire Disposal. We often refer to Redwood Empire Disposal as RED and, and/or the Ratto Group, which was the, the owner of Redwood Empire Disposal. In, in 2017, the council approved an amendment to the franchise agreement approving the, the transfer of the franchise agreement from RED to Recology. And so since that time, Recology has been our, our franchise waste hauler in our community. And I do want to note that they, they, since they've been here, and even prior to that, we've had a three can system that included solid waste, recyclables, and green waste. As, as this council knows, you took action to adopt a SB 1383 ordinance, did a second reading tonight, and that, that ordinance will take effect now in 30, in 30 days. That, that change does trigger a number of other requirements that will have impacts on, on our franchise waste hauler that will, will ultimately require a change in the franchise agreement. As well as, at the county level, there is a agreement for waste delivery that directs all waste to the, what's referred to as the central, the central landfill. And as part of that, there's a master operation agreement that also is in place that sets forth the, the disposal rates at our landfill, and again, directs all material to the landfill. With SB 1383, that, that, it will be necessary to change some of the provisions of the countywide waste delivery agreement and master operation agreement. And council will be asked to sign on, along with other cities, a comprehensive amend, or an amendment to that agreement. So Recology is going to touch on that tonight. Really, what we're, what we're wanting council to do is to get an overview of the rate application that was submitted by Recology, and to approve the agreement with R3, to start the important work of conducting a review of the rate application, and, and be able to do some technical analysis and be able to come back to council with, with that technical analysis. Historically, we bring forward an annual rate adjustment typically in September. The goal will be to complete this, this rate review and performance review in time to be able to bring back ultimately and package up a, a new set of rates that address the changes that are going to really be necessary for SB 1383, but also incorporate any changes that council supports and accepts based on Recology's request to modify their rates and extend the franchise agreement. So tonight, joining us from Recology is Celia Ferber and Nikki Burke, as well as the general manager, Fred Stimmler. We, we also have staff, Carrie Baxter, as, and if, if you can let him join, Jill, Palmer Hilton. Palmer is one of our associate attorneys with Myron Ave, and he's working with me on the wa, waste delivery agreement. So I would like to go ahead and introduce the team at Recology. I think it's going to be led up by either Celia or Nikki. They're going to do a share screen and kind of walk you through a presentation that's in your agenda packet, give you an overview of the, the rate and adjustment request, and give council an opportunity to, to answer or ask any questions you might have at this stage. And again, staff's direction or request, recommendation to council is to, to approve the resolution approving the agreement with, with R3 to, to start that important review of, of their rate, rate adjustment request. So with that said, Celia, I'll turn it over, turn it over to you. If you want to introduce your team and then move to share screen, that would be great.
Thank you so much, David. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you just fine.
Okay, great. And I, I'm not seeing where I can share my screen on here.
Pleasure to be with you.
Looks like I got muted there for a sec. Um, so I don't know how much you heard, because I think I was muted, but Fred Stimmler, general manager, is on, as well as Nikki Burke, our senior rate analyst. And I am the Waste Zero Manager for Recology Senator Moran, and I'll be presenting this evening, going over what we've accomplished in Cloverdale in the last four years since we became the service provider. Definitely have some, some nice highlights to share with you all. And then I'll touch on our special rate review, and go over that in detail. And then, like David mentioned, there's also some details regarding the SB 1383 franchise amendment and the WDA and FHA amendment. So a lot to go over. I'll, I'll try and be concise, and I'll go ahead and start now. So we've been the service provider for the city of Cloverdale since December of 2017. We're very honored to be the service provider. We, we provide recycle, compost, garbage, construction demolition, street sweeping, and recycle processing services to the community. We are a 100% employee owned company, which we're very proud of. And I do want to just take a moment to share what that means. Basically, every single employee at our company owns a piece of the company, and we don't answer to outside shareholders. So because of this, we're able to, to factor in the environment into every decision that we make, and we're better, we're able to better serve the communities that we live and work in. And so this is, we're the largest employee owned company in the resource recovery industry. And so just wanted to elaborate on that piece a little bit, because we're very proud of it. We're also here at Recology Senator Moran. We are members of the Teamsters Union 665. All employees have wonderful health benefits, retirement plans, and, and, you know, just all around great benefits and living wages. So here is a snapshot of our team. This was at a volunteer day. We like to do these volunteer days. We did more than prior to the pandemic, but we like to all get together and, you know, maybe we'll do it at a park, and we'll pull weeds, and we'll plant trees, and we'll spread mulch. And it's really important to us to give back to the community. Since the pandemic, we've gotten a little creative, and we've done blood drives instead. So giving back is one of our, our core principles as a company. So as we all know, the last few years have been a little bit, they've been a little bit challenging. We've, we've gone through a lot as a county. So there were the floods in 2019, there were more fires in 2019, there were more fires in 2020. We've gone through power safety shut off events. And then, of course, on top of that, the last two years have been pandemic. And so we've all gone through it together. And through that period, we've, we've been really proud to be a stable, reliable service provider, provider to the community. And we provide uninterrupted service, no matter the circumstances. And so we've also replaced three trucks in Cloverdale in order to meet California carb standards and improve service reliability. And we've, some of our, so we, we operate 13 sites in the county, and we've been able to bring all of those sites up to the highest standing with regulatory agencies, as well as all of our equipment. And we've been able to exceed regional safety goals as well. So here, our slide is, you can see the title, Waste Zero. This is also in our logo. It's, it's what we stand for. We encourage all of our customers, whether residential or commercial, to go from this before picture that you see with the large garbage bin and the small compost and recycle, to this after picture with the large recycle and the large compost and the small garbage. Because when people are educated on what goes where, they are able to, what they, what's actually considered garbage is really very little of what they generate. So we're able to educate the community and work with commercial customers as well as residential customers to decrease their garbage and increase their compost and recycling. And through, through these methods, we've actually had great progress in Cloverdale. In 2018, the landfill diversion rate for the city was 39%. And in 2021, it grew to 45% landfill diversion. So that's, that's a wonderful trajectory. We look forward to seeing that number continue to grow. Those are tons that we're keeping out of the landfill, and they're getting recovered, they're getting recycled or composted. So really big win for the environment. Within the city, there are 65 commercial compost programs at this time. Pictures here are of the trading post. And so they, they're doing a wonderful job with their compost program in Cloverdale. And you can see here what that kind of looks like. It's just, it's mainly food scraps from the back of the house kitchen. But all that material is going to go to a compost facility instead of the landfill. So we really appreciate them taking part in the program, and they're one of 65 accounts in, in the city that are part of the commercial program. We also have all of the schools signed up for the program, which is great. The kids are learning about it. They're taking that knowledge home with them. And another highlight is, in 2017, compliance with state law AB 1826 was only 22%. We basically inherited a fairly low compliance rate when we came in to be the service provider. And by the end of 2021, we were able to grow that compliance number to 89%. And without getting into too much detail, AB 1826 is, was basically the precursor to SB 1383. It, it required most commercial accounts to have compost service, but not all. Whereas SB 1383 requires all commercial accounts to have compost. So we're really happy to grow that compliance rate so much. So a lot of our, our efforts revolve around public education. We do this through our, our newsletters, which we mail out to all customers in the spring and the fall. We also have posters and labels and all different shapes and sizes. We have magnets and brochures and postcards, and we, we look for every which avenue to try and educate the public. And events is another important way. We, we really enjoy participating in the Citrus Fair in Cloverdale. And pictured here, seated at the table to the left is Emily Harris. She's the Waste Zero Specialist devoted to Cloverdale. She's been in the community since 2017, and she's done an excellent job. So she might be a familiar face to you all. Okay, so next up is, is that I'm going to dive into our special rate review. Kind of touched on some of our highlights that we've, we've accomplished in the last four years, and now I'm going to go over the need for a special rate review. So currently, we are $1 million below the level required for viable ongoing operations in Cloverdale. This is nearly $1 million annually. So basically, the, the rates are not covering the cost to do business in Cloverdale. And the rates are well below market, market levels, and they're well below your, the neighboring communities as well. We've had increases in operational costs, including labor, fuel especially lately, equipment, gate rates at the compost facility or the landfill, and also the cost for, for regulatory compliance. And then now, we have SB 1383, which is a new law that came into effect January 1st of this year. And that, it actually, the, the requirement is on the city. The law, it is on the city to, to basically handle all obligations of the law, but the city can choose to delegate some of those responsibilities to entities like the hauler. So there are certain aspects of SB 1383 that it makes sense for Recology to handle, such as the education and outreach, the route audits, collecting the compostable materials from all of the, the entities that need the program. And so it is expected that the city will, will, uh, sign a SB 1383 franchise amendment, which will basically delegate those responsibilities to Recology. And of course, there are costs associated with those additional services. So there's another slide that I'll go into more detail on that. So in the, the special rate review letter, which is included in the agenda packet, you'll see that there are two rate options detailed in there. And so option one is a stepped rate increase plan going over the course of four years. And this would include a 15-year contract extension. And so this is basically a way to, to lessen the burden. You can, if you stagger it over time, it's, it's not such a big increase all at once. So there's, there's that benefit, but then it's, it is like a slightly, it's a, it's a higher increase than normal for four years in a row. So there's that, there's, there's pros and cons there. Versus option two, it's a one-time extraordinary rate increase of 51%. That's the rate increase needed to, to get us at the point where we are actually covering our expenses, and we are a viable business operation in Cloverdale. And then that would come with a 10-year contract extension. And so the pro there is you get it out of the way. And then the rate increases after that are pretty reasonable. So there's, there's pros and cons with both options, and be happy to discuss those further. Here we have a rate compare table. There's a lot to digest in this slide. And these, right here, option one, goes over the, the stepped increase, the step rate increase. So in year one, there's the rate, so if we're looking at the 32 gallon garbage, which is the most common residential size, that is still putting, that is still putting Cloverdale below a, the, the closest neighboring zone, which is the unincorporated Cloverdale Zone. And their 32 gallon garbage rate is $45.91. And Santa Rosa, Healdsburg, and Windsor are on this rate compare chart, but they're rating, they're going to be experiencing rate increases in the very near future due to SB 1383. So these rates that you're seeing for them are actually going to be higher, and, and those are set for approval in the next few weeks. So, and then option two, if you, if you just apply the 51% rate increase all at once, the 32 gallon garbage cart is $43.94, which is still lower than the the 32-gallon garbage cart is $43.94, which is still lower than the than the Sinoma, the unincorporated Sinoma County Cloverdale Zone, which is at $45.91. If you look down at the commercial rates, you'll see that the option two, the commercial rates in Cloverdale are still significantly lower than all of the rate compare zones. And every jurisdiction kind of structures their rates slightly differently. So in Cloverdale, the commercial rates just tend to be lower than in other jurisdictions. But basically, all this to say that even with a 51% rate increase, Cloverdale is basically on par with the neighboring communities. And in some cases, would still have lower rates than the neighboring communities. So next, to go over, David had mentioned a couple of amendments that are needed due to SB 1383. And so this is not before the council to make a decision on tonight, but this is just an informational piece. Like I had mentioned, SB 1383 allows the cities or jurisdictions to delegate responsibilities to certain entities. And so we've drafted a franchise amendment that goes over the responsibilities that it makes sense for Recology to handle. And so we would ask that that get brought before the council at some point in the near future so that we can just have it in writing, what we will be handling for SB 1383, and the city can then be in compliance in that regard. And so again, what we'll be handling is the implementation of compost programs to the remaining commercial accounts that need it. And so there's some equipment that's needed for that. There's a portion of a truck that's needed, as well as new carts and bins. Color-coordinated containers with compliance signage are needed. Route auditing, the law requires that every single route is audited at least once per year. The law requires extensive education and outreach, which is our specialty, so we'll be happy to take that on. And then the law also requires extensive tracking and reporting for all of the above. And we have systems in place to track and report on that. So the next amendment I'm going to go over is the WDA and FHA amendment. So again, WDA stands for Waste Delivery Agreement. And FHA stands for Franchise Hauler Agreement. And Cloverdale has these agreements in place. The Waste Delivery Agreement is in place with Republic and us, Recology. And, or sorry, excuse me, the Waste Delivery Agreement is just with Republic. And then the Franchise Hauler Agreement is with Republic and Recology. And Cloverdale, along with all of the cities in Sonoma County, besides Petaluma, has those agreements. And so basically, the SB 1383 needs of each jurisdiction are best served by funding the Commercial Food Waste Program through the Recology franchise agreement instead of the gate rates. Currently, there's a $4.21 charge on the tip fee at the landfill. And that goes towards funding the Commercial Food Waste Program. But it does not fund it nearly close to all the way. And so with SB 1383 requiring every single commercial account to have a compost program, it makes more sense to get rid of that $4.21 gate fee and just incorporate the cost of the Commercial Food Waste Program into each franchise agreement individually. So that's what this amendment is expressing. It deletes the provision that requires Recology to operate limited Commercial Food Waste Programs funded only through the gate rates. And it eliminates the $4.21 gate fee. And so it will just allow Cloverdale to manage that program directly with us, Recology, through our franchise agreement. Okay, thank you all so much. I know that was a lot to go over. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. You know, I had one question to start with here on slide number 10, where we have an option of doing it over multiple years, over a four-year period and getting a 15-year contract as opposed to a one-time 51% increase for 10 years. So going with the 15-year, four-year spread, it actually comes out cheaper. It comes out to 46.1%? Could you just, am I reading that right or am I missing something?
Celia, I can respond to that. This is Nikki Brooks, the rate analyst for Recology. If you add those numbers up, it does come out to a lower percentage. But because those numbers are applied cumulatively, the 23% is applied in year one, and then you go above that. So it does come out to a slightly larger percentage increase in the end. I think it's like a 55% increase.
I should have known that. Thank you.
I had a question.
Go ahead.
Did the subcommittee express or have a preference for either structure when you were presented with us?
Mayor, members of council, if I can respond to the question?
I went right to the two choices too, and...
I don't think this was presented to us.
Oh, I thought this went to the subcommittee initially. Is that correct, City Manager?
It was provided in the packet to the Finance, Admin, and Police Subcommittee. The, you know, the goal was really to bring forward how we wanted to review the request. And I think, you know, I know that there's a real desire to kind of dive in and understand it. But I think that's why, you know, the recommendation tonight is to authorize or approve the agreement with R3 so they can do the necessary analysis and bring that back to council with some interpretation of the alternatives that are being presented. There may be other alternatives that are considered as part of this review. And that's why I also think it's important that we do a performance review as part of this, because I think we want to ensure, you know, either scenarios involve significant rate increases. And I think it's incumbent that if we ultimately bring those forward, that we also address to the customers that Recology is performing pursuant to the franchise agreement. So that's why there's two components to the proposal that was provided by R3. So we're wanting to ensure to, the customers in Cloverdale that are served by Recology that they're performing in accordance with the agreement, but also to do a detailed review and be able to bring that necessary analysis back to council. Because I don't feel like you have enough information really tonight to make a decision on those two. Certainly welcome to kind of offer your perspective. But the goal will be, as we do this work, to bring back the analysis to Subcommittee with a recommendation that ultimately would kind of provide, you know, more detailed analysis of the alternatives. I did want to introduce a member of the R3 team who I've worked closely with is Carrie Baxter with R3 Consulting. R3 Consulting pretty much only does work for municipalities. She's taken a look at the, reviewed the scope of work, or excuse me, the rate review application and provided the scope of work. So I just want to make sure that she's available as a resource to council if you have any questions. So Carrie, is there anything you want to add just about your, or R3's proposal and how it would address, you know, the council's questions about those two alternatives?
Thank you, David. I think Celia did a great job of explaining everything that's being put forward in front of the city and what we'd be reviewing. Ultimately, you know, the couple of options that are presented would be extending the current franchise agreement terms. So just doing a due diligence review of their performance for the city since they took over the contract from Rado. And also ensuring that what they're asking for really does meet the requirements of the franchise agreement and is in the best interest of your rate pairs. So that's what we'd be doing for the city if we do this performance review and special rate review.
Thank you, Carrie. Councilwoman Paula?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of comments. First of all, I do think it's important to do the franchise, the rate review adjustment so we have more factual information. So I certainly support that. But I would like the contract to at least consider the following. I'd like to see more community cleanup days in our contract to serve the residents where they have more times. I think you do maybe two a year, one a year, I know two. But it would be nice to maybe do three, even four, maybe a quarterly, but just something to think about. Also, replacement cans. A lot of the cans are in really bad shape. I've heard from a lot of constituents, the lids are breaking. They really do need to be upgraded and replaced. So that's something I would like you to consider. Also, the last thing I just want to mention is we do have a lot of seniors, a lot of people on very fixed incomes. 51% or more, it's a big hit. So I was hoping that there may be some kind of programs that you may be able to offer if people are on a fixed income, very tight budget, that maybe some kind of a lifeline, like they do with certain other utilities, that they may be able to get a lower rate. So those are the things that I would just like some consideration for. Thank you.
I have nothing extra.
We do have the PG&E Care Program. Basically, if a customer qualifies for the PG&E Care Program, they can qualify for a discounted rate for our services as well in Cloverdale. I just wanted to mention that real quick.
I didn't know that. Thank you for that.
Anything else from the council? Anyone in the public? I see no hands in the audience or on the attendees list. All right, I'll bring it back to the dice.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce the resolution by Todd Alonely. A resolution of City Council. City of Cloverdale approved in an agreement with the R3 Consulting Group to conduct special rate review of Recology's rate adjustment application and a performance review of the franchise agreement between the city and Recology for regulatory compliance and operational performance and authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with R3.
Second? Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lands?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz is absent.
Mayor Fekkend, I just want to extend a thank you to Celia for her presentation this evening. And we'll obviously be working with the Recology team and Carrie on reviewing the rate application that Recology submitted and, you know, working to bring forward the other amendments that are necessary to address the SB 1383 and the modifications to the Waste Delivery Agreement.
I second that. Thank you, guys.
Thank you all.
Moving on, H, Subcommittee Items, Finance, Admin, and Police.
Mr. Mayor, our next meeting is scheduled for April the 4th.
Planning and Sustainability?
Sorry, I don't have that before me.
Next meeting is April 19th at 1:30.
Thank you. Has that change been finalized, that rescheduling of that meeting been finalized? Or, you know, I think I'm thinking of FIRE now.
I'm not sure that, I have to confirm, I'll have to check the meeting date.
Yeah, because I had a, I'm sorry, I'm confusing the two Subcommittee meetings. So I have a potential conflict with that.
Okay.
I have a CTA right up against that one.
Gotcha.
So I apologize. Yeah, and I don't know if we finalized that as a permanent date with the FIRE District yet.
Oh, on the, we haven't set a new date on the FIRE District?
No, I was thinking, I was confusing the two. Sorry. Thank you for the, so it's April 19th. And I believe the next one is going to be FIRE and...
Now, it's Public Works and Facilities?
Oh, apologies.
April 26th at 1:30?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I dozed off there for a second.
Completely.
I was snoozing.
We got you.
We met last evening and our next meeting is actually scheduled, as you said, for April 26th. We had a real good meeting last evening. I'm going to save the big hurrah for City Manager Kelly to share with everyone on the grant that we received. But, you know, we have quite a list of tasks that we're working on. One of the big things we talked about, of course, was the update on Fourth Street Project. And Vanessa advised us last evening that all the laterals have been replaced and it's moving forward. It sounds to me like it's going to be ahead of schedule. And like I said, the city manager will give out more of a report when we get to his section.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add to that report, the one item, the city manager is going to be sending out to the full council just kind of an overview of one of the big projects we've been working on is the addition of pickleball courts to one of our city parks. So we're going to, we want to bring the full council into the communication on that in the way of an informational update, so they have a chance to weigh in to the city manager. And then we can hopefully package this up and bring it back to the full council for action somewhere in the near future.
And for the uninitiated, there is a wonderful introduction to pickleball on YouTube. If you do a search for it, "An Introduction to Pickleball."
Part of his email, thank you for sharing that, because it's going to be a slide presentation that our lead pickleball, I don't know what his official title is, but he gave a real good presentation to our secretary.
Should we call him our grand marshal?
No, it's Brad Harrell. He's really, but you'll get a lot of really important information when you look at that presentation. So, but that'd be forthcoming. I just wanted to announce that. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, just one more thing, seeing how we're picking some things out. One of the things that I'm also excited about is the restrooms on the plaza. That project is moving forward. City manager assures me that they'll be in by the end of the calendar year. And we're expecting right after the Friday Night Live venue to get started on that construction. So excited about that.
That's great to hear.
Well, we're still on Public, are we on Public Works? We're on Public Works. Did you want to announce the drinking fountains?
I'm sorry?
The drinking fountains that were installed. I think one is in Ferber. And can you give us an update on the water refill drinking fountains that Hector was able to install?
Absolutely. We didn't report at the Public Works Subcommittee, but we did include in the weekly Cloverdale newsletter an update that we received a grant from Zero Waste Sonoma to install the new drinking fountains. They actually have four components to them. Their traditional fountain, they have the ability to fill a water bottle. And then there's also a doggy dish as part of them. So our park staff have already installed one at Ferber and it's in place. And we are working on installing a second one that was provided to us at City Park.
And just in time for Little League season two. So it's just, it would be something that we'll be able to encourage kids and parents to bring their own water bottles so that we don't overburden. As we just saw from our last presentation, we're making sure that we're diverting recyclables from the landfill. And the fewer bottles you use, the less you have to worry about how you recycle it. So it's a great step forward, but that was a great win by Hector and his team to get that grant and get those installed.
Absolutely.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, David, on the City Park installation of that water fountain, is that going to replace the old brick one that we have there or is it going to be in addition to?
You know, I haven't, I'll have to confer with Hector Calvano, our park superintendent, on the location of the new fountain.
Because it would be nice, Councilmember Bagby mentioned it's the beginning of baseball season. If it could be down more towards the baseball field there and that grassy area right outside the restrooms would be good.
Right. Actually, that's where I thought it was going to be located, but I have to double check. Because I don't anticipate we were going to demo that existing fairly old-fashioned water fountain that is in the brick and structure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Joint City and Fire District?
As I indicated, I think it's a moving target and we can report out on it if it happens. But what's the tentative date that we have on it?
I was working with the chief. I know he's... I was working with the chief. I know he's, it's, he, his board meeting dates have changed, and he was going to get back to me on a date that works for his, his board members. And I, I need to follow up with Chief Jenkins on his availability for the next meeting.
So we'll leave this date off unless you want me to say it. Councilmember?
Let's leave it off until it's announced.
Joint City and School.
I don't have the next meeting date written down. The one on here was canceled because of spring break.
We don't have another one yet that we're waiting to hear back.
It's to be, to be announced.
Yes, sir. And the Homelessness Community Advisory Group, our next meeting is April 12th at 5:00 PM at the Cloverdale Library. Subcommittee reports? Anything else? Council reports? Anything?
Mine was submitted with the packet.
Any informational reports? Legislative reports? Letters to support or opposition?
Mayor, I do have a couple of legislative items. When I referred a draft letter to council in regards to a funding bill that's making its way through the legislature to support or provide local assistance to cities for implementation of SB 1383. It seems like it's a fairly slam dunk in terms of, you know, voicing our support for, for this legislation. The league did prepare a draft letter for us. I'll hand out a copy, so you can take a look at it. We didn't agendize it. It just came in a day before yesterday. And I just seek counsel, if you're supportive, we'll prepare it and have the mayor, mayor sign it, and we'll get it submitted to the representatives, Honorable Nancy Skinner, as well as Honorable Phil Ting, and copy, copy our local legislators. If you're okay with that, we'll proceed. In the second legislative letter, in June of last year, former Mayor Cruz signed a letter of support for the Smart Rail extension to Windsor for what's called RACE funds. It's the Rebuilding America Infrastructure and Sustainability and Equity Program. Smart, I think, did a very good job, but they, they came up a little bit short on their application, and they're reapplying. And they've asked if we can, if we would sign just a letter of support to the Secretary of Transportation, Mr. Pete Buttigieg. And again, we had submitted a letter of support previously, and they're just asking if we would agree to submit our letter of support to get the rail system to Windsor, or get it north of Windsor, actually, to really to Healdsburg.
Well, let's add Cloverdale to the letter. Yeah, no, I'm serious. We support it, and we look forward to, you know, additional support to get it all the way up to Cloverdale.
Got to get over the river first.
Over the bridge.
I thought they were saying allocation of funds to revamp that bridge.
Congressman Huffman, it's kind of like an ongoing, it is an, it's, it's like episodes of Down Abbey. One episode, the earmarks are happening. Another episode, earmarks are not. I think that they're kind of not. But Congressman Huffman is fighting very hard to get federal funds that will be earmarked for the Healdsburg Bridge. In addition to that, the estimates for the bridge, the engineers lowered them considerably. So it's looking very doable. And for the RACE funds, just for your reference, that's kind of the backup plan to the backup plan to the case regarding the RM3 funds, just hasn't been decided yet by, by the courts as to whether or not they're going to allow the money that's already been raised and earmarked for the Windsor extension. So the, this is in addition to, and just in case, and could possibly be used for other things if the other funding for the extension to Windsor goes through. So it's, you know, I think that what's great about the, the foundation that Farhad left is go after everything as far as funding is concerned. And it's kind of all starting to percolate up now. So, yeah, we'll see what happens. But fingers crossed.
I'll prepare both those letters for, for the mayor's signature. End of report, Mayor, on legislative items.
Next report?
Next report. All right, thank you. Well, as, as mentioned by Vice Mayor Walter at the Public Works Subcommittee meeting yesterday, we, we made an announcement, when I say we, include our interim city engineer, Vanessa Apodaca, and myself, that we were notified by the California Department of Water Resources that where the City of Cloverdale is a recipient of just slightly over $3 million grant for water infrastructure improvements to address, address the drought. That's a very significant notice for us to receive in, in terms of the funding amount. And I want to acknowledge the work that our interim city engineer and her team put together really reflects the expertise of our interim city engineer and team at West Yost. But likewise, our, our water staff, Darren Hernandez, he was integral to identifying the projects that are part of our capital improvement program. And then last but not least, the work that Councilmember Paula did to get letters of support by, from our representatives, including Senator McGuire and Assembly, Assemblymember Wood, because we know that their support in our, for our funding is so vital to getting, getting approved. So it was really a team effort. Of course, council supported our application, and we were really fortunate to have received the notice of award. We, we did note during our discussion yesterday, we have a deadline of 2026 to complete the four significant projects that are included in our funding application, which include rehabilitation of two of our wells in our well field at our water treatment plant, upgrading our SCADA system, as well as meter replacement with electronic meter read system, or AMI system. So those are all things that are tied to being able to better respond to drought conditions. Improving our wells is vital in addressing some of the current constraints we have. So this is really exciting news for, for the city. And again, it was, it was quite a team effort. And, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll have to look closely at the grant agreement, get that executed, and start very quickly on, starting to implement, implement the, those projects. So I fully expect we'll be bringing agreements back to council to further implementation. But those, again, are very critical and important projects that are included on our, in our capital improvement program. So that's pretty exciting news. Sonoma County actually came out pretty well in, in that process, receiving a pretty significant percentage of the overall amount of funding. And there was a significant amount of needs that were, were not met. I think over, over a billion dollars in funding was requested. And I think it was 225 million which was available. And, you know, Cloverdale got three of that. So pretty, pretty, pretty great news. And it reflects, again, you know, what we can do if we are able to put together really good grant applications, and we certainly have the need. So it's, it's exciting.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just kind of piggyback on that, you know, I would just like to give a shout out, kudos to Councilmember Paula and City Manager Kelly for the hard work they did in, in pushing our legislators to, to put Cloverdale up there. Also Vanessa and her team, I truly, you know, the grant application, I don't have to tell you regardless of what it is, is really challenging. And I'm not so sure that we would have had that if it wasn't for Vanessa and her, her team. And I say that not negatively, just because of staff time. You know, we're so shorthanded, and to fill out one of those applications, they just jumped on it and did it right away. The, and Darren, too, you know, working with Vanessa on that. But, you know, the, on the other side of the rose-colored glasses is getting the money. It's a reimbursement program where we lay the money out first, then we fill out the forms, dot the i's, cross the t's, and hold our breath, and hopefully we'll get the money. And then the other thing is, as we talked about at the Subcommittee meeting last, last evening, is supply and demand. You know, we're not the only city that's going to be going after those electronic meters and that electronic equipment. And with the shortages and supplies going on because of chips and what have you, technology, we got to get those supplies in right away, or else they're not going to be on the shelves when we need them. We only have until 2026 to get these programs onboard. So it's important that we really give this top priority from a council and a staff level. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else?
Mayor, just a quick reminder for council that there's a Mayor and Councilmembers Association meeting on Thursday, April 14th. I've received feedback from, from two of you that you'd like to attend. And I'm going to follow up, Vice Mayor, on the, whether the program will be made virtually.
It will not be. I called today, and Maria said, no, it will not be virtual. It's an in-person only.
That's too bad.
Yeah.
I'm hoping, I'm actually, I'm, I've been assigned to the ad hoc to update the bylaws. And that, working with city manager from Cotati and Healdsburg, and Mayor of Petaluma, and former mayor, Santa Rosa. And it's one of the things that we're really pushing for is really upgrading the, the structure of how it is maintained, how we communicate with all the council members, take RSVPs, schedule meetings. And I'm really trying to push for making sure that they're hybrid so that, or, and at least recorded, because so many of those presentations, it could be from the homeless advisory group, it could be from Supervisor Gore, it could be, you know, sometimes we, I think we've had Congressman Huffman or Congressman Thompson come and present. And I, I think that they're so, they're just too valuable to have one time. They've got to be available if you, if you can't make the meeting, or if, you know, God forbid, we have a resurgence, and people just really need to watch their health. So I will, I really, thanks for letting me know that that's, that's happening for this meeting. And I will really push that that's a, a part of the bylaws, is that we do either record those meetings or make them hybrid going forward. So we really need to modernize the operations of mayors and council members. And so I'll take that into my next meeting. So I appreciate that.
I'd appreciate that, too, because I know I will not be able to attend that in person.
And just the, I think the last time we met in person was City of Sonoma. That's an hour away from here. It's one hour door to door. I've, I had a client in Sonoma that I don't go to very often anymore. We do everything virtually. But, I mean, it was the whole day by the time you're there and back. So I appreciate that. I just wanted to also comment on what you were saying about the, the grant that we received. I think that that is just such an accomplishment. And it's a reflection of our work with West Yost. I mean, it's kind of, working with West Yost is like working with Myers-Nave and as Jose. You don't just get Jose, you get his entire team of, you know, and you get their expertise. When you work with West Yost, you get Vanessa, who is incredible to work with. I worked with her directly at Russian River Watershed. And I've actually heard from members of the staff here how much they enjoy working with her. But you get her staff, and they understand small cities and what our challenges are. And so you don't just get her, you get access to her entire team. And so while I really miss having our own city engineer, that's one, this is one of the advantages, I think, is that you get an advantage of working with the entire team. So I think, congratulations. It's never enough to say congratulations and thank you for all the hard work, because that's going to be, that's going to be an investment in infrastructure that's going to give back to our community for literally generations. So thanks for all your hard work on that.
Anything else, David?
Nothing else, Mayor.
Jose?
Mayor, not much, just letting the council know we are working on the fireworks ordinance to be placed on the ballot. There's still time, but we do want to bring it early to the council. That way, if there's any revisions, any changes to it, we have time to come back to the council until the council feels like it's right to go on to the ballot. So we are working on that. So you will see that in the very near future.
Thank you. Status update on current impacts to water supply.
Mayor, I'll, I'll be short. I shared with council that we received a note from the State Water Board to prepare for more drought impacts due to ongoing dry conditions. So, you know, there's going to be more to come in terms of information or notices from the state board. We're, we're certainly understanding that, you know, there's going to be probably some type of continuation of the curtailment order. Again, at the Public Works Subcommittee, we're talking about the discussion of a voluntary drought agreement. Really, it probably followed more as an MOU, and that we'll be planning on bringing that forward to council, probably at the second meeting in April, to have a more discussion as whether council supports a voluntary agreement, MOU, in lieu of, as an alternative to curtailment. So kind of the message is, you know, encourage residents to continue to conserve, prepare for a dry season ahead. Hopefully, this, this storm we get will, will help us a little bit this, this weekend coming forward. But we can fully anticipate we're going to, we're going to experience, continue to experience some dry conditions.
Status update on current emergency?
No real updates, Mayor.
Council direction on future agenda items? Definitely the code of conduct in meetings and press. And I would like to, I don't know if it needs to go to a Subcommittee, David. I know I've mentioned this to you a couple times, looking at a full-time grant writer. I don't know which Subcommittee would like to look at that, but I think that that would be a very beneficial for us right now, looking at all the projects we have on the horizon.
Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Mayor. As we talked about on the themes under, that we were going to give the city manager comments back, and we're going to be talking about those things. And one of the things I did put down as a grant writer, there's a lot of money out there. We need to be positioned to go after it. So I would suggest at our budget work session, when the date to be announced, hopefully soon. I know the survey went out, and I haven't heard anymore, but that's going to be one of the topics that we're going to hopefully be putting funding in place, so we can do that. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. And, and just to kind of piggyback on, on what happened at last night's Public Works Subcommittee, when Vanessa, you know, and David shared with us that we got that grant. It's like a lot of these consultants that we contract with, like the pavement and striping contract that was brought before us last evening. I forget what company that was.
W Trans.
Yeah, W Trans. But, you know, do they have grant writers in-house that can assist us in getting a grant to get that money that we want? And I think that's one of the questions we have to ask when we go out to these advisors that are going to do reports for us. Do you have grant writing capabilities? And what's out there for us? So.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And the direction noted, I'd recommend, Mayor, to put that discussion item on the Finance, Admin, and Police Subcommittee. And, and as Councilmember Paula shared, we did get feedback, you know, on our budget themes and goals, and that was identified when we had that discussion. So, you know, I think that what you'll see as part of our, the work, the staff's work plan will be, you know, to hire a grant writer. I think part of the discussion at the Finance, Admin, and Police would be to look at how we might want to, to meet some of the, some of our objectives. And I think looking at, you know, whether it's a, I think one alternative is a staff person, but another one might be allocating, creating a budget allocation that gives us the flexibility to hire kind of specialty grant writers to assist us with, with different grants. Because there's, there's a lot of grants out there with different, kind of, kind of require different technical expertises. So to have some flexibility and be able to, you know, have that budget in place to be able to facilitate that might be, you know, an alternative that council would want us to consider.
And just one last comment. The league put out a thing, there's over $1.7 trillion in various things, roadways, broadband, water, different things. And we do have a lot of needs in a lot of those areas. We need to get on the ground fast and get these things moving, because we could maybe, hopefully, secure some funding to make some real positive things happen.
A lot, a lot of those still do require a local match, so we have to be cognizant of. of...
Right, and they'll identify that, yeah.
And I had a follow-up question regarding, you know, W Trans and other contracts, I would be, or other people we contract with. I would be interested to know if Coastland has that capability as well in-house. And also just for the, the budget meeting, if, I think that we can work effectively with Coast, I know we can work effectively with Coastland, because we have for years, and I know we can work effectively with, with West Yost. Maybe if we can identify some ways that we can also streamline operations based on their observations of, of working with us. And that might be something that we, we would want to identify and then, you know, budget for, maybe not in this year, but maybe in subsequent years. I know we can't, we can't efficientize our way out of budget issues, but if we can, you know, if we can streamline processes as much as possible with our existing outside teams, we can be more effective so that when the opportunity does arise, we are able to add staff if necessary as well, like a grant writer and, and other essential staff that we just don't have right now.
Anything else? We'll adjourn at 8:30. Thank you all.
Want to acknowledge Jill. Thank you, Jill, for coming and joining us.